Call the order, the Board of Aldermen meeting to order for the City of Warrenton for July 16th, 2013, 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. I ask if everyone would stand and fix the flag. Alderman Kessler will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, tonight you can say "play ball."
It's right, All-Star game.
All-Star game, so we can say "play ball."
That's true. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, the executive session minutes, from June 18th, 2013.
Motion for approval of the executive session minutes from June 18th?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the executive session minutes from June 18th, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 3B, open and executive minutes from July 2nd, 2013.
Making motion to approve the opening and executive minutes from July 2nd, 2013?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to approve the open and executive minutes from July 2nd, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kesslerly?
Abstained, absent.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0 with one extension. Item 3C, regular board meeting minutes from July 2nd, 2013.
Motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from July 2nd, 2013?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to approve the regular board meeting minutes from July 2nd, 2013. Roll call.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kesslerly?
Abstained, absent.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0 with one extension. Item 4, hearing from the public, and each meeting we give the public an opportunity to address the board. We ask that you come forward to the podium, state your name, and limit your remarks to five minutes or less. So, if anybody would like to address the Board of Aldermen, please do so at this time. Nobody wants to talk to us. Not hearing from anyone from the public, then we will extend that same opportunity to the Board of Aldermen. Any Board member want to make any comments to the public?
I'd like to say that this past Thursday evening, I again had the opportunity to attend the concert in the park. Another good crowd, more good entertainment. Anybody that hasn't taken advantage of that free night of entertainment, I encourage you to bring your chair out and bring out your cooler and enjoy it. They've really put on some good shows. The other thing that I would like to say is, Dottie's not on the agenda tonight, but I've had a chance to speak with her, and they hosted over thirty teams to a softball tournament at the facility this weekend. Apparently, there was quite a bit of traffic through town at the local retail locations. So, again, the weather cooperated in another successful event. Is that it?
That's it. Brad?
Well, I'd just like to say, we're seeing a lot of overweight work on the state highways in all directions around our city, two service roads in both South and North 47, so that's much needed, and I think we should appreciate it.
Good. Alderman Dryer? You're good? Start on this end, Alderman Clark?
Good.
And Alderman Ock?
Yeah, I have three things.
Go.
And I apologize in advance, because these might take a little time. I asked Mayor if one of them would be put on the agenda. I know, it's five minutes for the public, John, I'm sorry. And, but, first thing is, I did have a request from two of the property owners on Middletown Road, who were asking if the ditches could be mowed. They claimed that they haven't mowed for quite a while, and I went by there this evening, and some of the weeds were up above the hood of my car, so I think it needs to be addressed. Fortunately, a lot of the property owners along that stretch clean the ditches themselves, but there are some areas where I think the city needs to do some work. So, if that can be taken care of, I'd appreciate it. The next thing I wanted to do was to talk a little bit about the audit. I was a little bit surprised after the last meeting that we got audit results and the board wasn't consulted prior to the releasing of the results, because I was under the impression that this was part of the audit. So, I called up, or I sent an email out to Heather, who was, I guess, the auditor, I'm not sure what her title is, and she referred me to Bobby Showers, who was the auditor in charge. And I asked him a series of questions, and these are probably the same questions I would have asked him in an executive session. And I told the counselor before this, you know, my intent to having this discussion is so people would learn a little bit more about the municipal court, and this is in no way a threatening conversation with any employees or all that. I did send out an email to Terry, telling her to congratulate her staffs on receiving a good audit. But I kind of wanted to go through a few things that I think the public would find interesting, and the stuff that the public did call me about and ask about. So, let me just kind of go through the list of questions I asked Bobby. First question was, was the audit of the municipal court initiated because of the citizens' requests for a city audit? And his response was, yes, that that's what they did, although they didn't specifically have to do it, but they felt they should do it since they were here. And I said, what causes you normally to go out and do an audit of a court? And he says it's basically random sampling that they go out and do unless somebody requests. And so, I know there was some concern on the part of the board earlier, a few years ago when this petition first came up, that we were spending forty thousand dollars, and it was a lot of money for the taxpayers to spend. But I think the results of the audit show that there is a benefit from an audit. It may necessarily be totally financial, but there is other benefits that fall in line. So, my next question to him was, why wasn't the board consulted and meet with the auditors prior to the release of the report? His position was that the way the audit team looks at municipal court audits is it's really over the jurisdiction of the district, what would the terminology?
Circuit court.
The circuit court. And so, therefore, they typically don't view a city council as someplace where they would go and discuss the audit findings. So, that's their reasoning for not coming back to the city. I understand that, but I guess I have a little bit problem with that in the sense that it would be kind of like if somebody came in and audited me and talked to me and my staff, and then left, but never talked to the board. But I think they feel like the municipal judge and the circuit court really is the board. So, I think that was a reasonable explanation, although I don't necessarily agree with it. Because I have been trying to push that the audit, when the city audit comes through, that it be a public session that they present the audit in, and they cited a section of the law stating that they didn't have to do it, although if you look up the section of law, it says this can be used for a private discussion. It doesn't say it must be used for a private discussion, but that's kind of where I'm at. Then I asked them the question is, what are the guidelines for determining that the audit is good? Is it subjective? I mean, we got a good rating, and there's not a lot of good ratings out there, I understand, and we got a good rating. So, what is the guidelines for an auditor to determine if something's good, if something's excellent, if something's poor? Because if you note in the audit report, they found one area deficiency in internal controls and two non-compliances with legal provisions. And so, my question to him is, when that be enough to switch it over from a fair, from a good audit to a fair audit to a poor audit? And his explanation to me was that, you know, from their perspective, they look at several things in making their determination. One of the things they look at is the seriousness of the deficiencies. And then they also look at the materiality. So, if you were to find an error in internal controls, but it didn't materially affect anything, you could still get a good rating as opposed to a fair rating. And they also mentioned that another reason the good rating came is because of the response of the staff. Because as they were going through the audit, they were able to point out areas of deficiency, the staff was extremely responsive to making the changes that are necessary to get the situation in order. And I think that's a compliment for all staff, because I've been audited most of my adult life on one side of the table or another, and I think it's natural, somebody comes in and audits you and says, you're doing something wrong, you go away from it. You know, I've been doing this for twenty years, and you can't come in here and tell me you're doing it wrong. So, they were very impressed with how the court, the staff, and everybody responded to the suggestions that were made, and that contributed a lot, he said, to the good rating. So, again, I sent out an email to Terry congratulating her staff, and I think that was my thing at the time, is when you see a response to an issue and you don't, because he said they do a lot of audits in small municipal courts, and what they typically experience is a lot of pushback on recommendations. I mean, see, that's more normal than it is not that people would say, okay, we'll make these changes. They get the pushback, and they did not get the pushback here. Then the other question I asked him, and this is an area where the counselor is involved, is I said, well, could you explain to me how we could get a good rating if we had a significant control weakness in that some of the tickets weren't signed off or initial off, and the judge, or not the judge, but the clerk was making adjustments to the tickets? And I guess this is where I think some conversation would be aligning to the public, because I did talk to somebody involved in municipal courts, and I don't know if this is true here, and they pointed out if the clerk is making modifications to tickets and it's not being signed off, there is some concern that there could potentially be fraud, there could be tickets that are modified that are not proper, and that was why they considered it efficiency in internal controls. And the person I talked to about the municipal courts said that typically, in his experience, the circuit clerk has some flexibility in what she can do as an officer compromise. So, what he said, and you can confirm if this is true in our quarter, if it's not true, that she may have a schedule that says if somebody comes in with this and they want to plead to something else, this is an acceptable plea down. Is that how the court works?
Well, there are guidelines, and, you know, obviously, that's always a concern. And I think one of the first things, Gary, is the cases that were looked at, one of the things that was pointed out, and I think they confirmed this with the auditors, there was no fraud or anything that was discovered that was. One of the things we have been doing that we've implemented differently that was one of the things that was happening was, and it's unfortunate, but it's just the way you have to operate to make sure everything's, all the i's are dotted and the p's are crossed, is, you know, for example, a significant portion of these cases were cases that were actually looked at by the auditor, were no insurance tickets. Someone would get ticketed by a police officer for not having proof of insurance. They didn't have it in their car. They would come up to the municipal court clerk, and the court clerk would show it as dismissed. And so, basically, for example, now, we have to require those citizens to come to court because in that situation, they were saying you had the clerk dismissing a ticket even though she had the guidelines that if you verified there was proper insurance, it could be dismissed. That was one of them. The other ones were situations where there was guidelines written out for attorney recommendations in which, okay, here's all these attorney recommendations. If you get a speeding ticket, you hire a lawyer, and it's amended down to illegal parking. Basically, that that was consistent with the guidelines that I wrote out, and it showed, you know, money was paid consistent with the guidelines. However, there was no initial from me, even though it reflected that it had been reviewed and the audit had shown that that was consistent with it. And the final thing was, of those tickets they looked at were situations where indigent people came into court, and they would enter a plea of guilty, and we would either put them through a community service program that the city has, or, you know, basically, I would just dismiss them. And I was doing those orally in court, where a municipal court has no record, there's no court reporter taking stuff down. And so, there were some tickets that reflected the judge's notes, case was dismissed by prosecutor, but I didn't sign off on it. So, I think that it says it's a significant control weakness, but every single one of them that we talked about, we said, well, this is what happened more than likely. There was no fraud or inappropriate or ethical issue with any of them. And basically, it was, you know, basically what we do now is, we go through, you know, whatever happens in court and everything signed off, and then I sign off to approve all of them, just so it's documented, you know?
Yeah, and I think your point right, that there was no overlying under issue here, it was just a case of documentation, and, you know. But, you know, I think a lot of people who hear about municipal court things really don't have an understanding of how things work. Why can some people get ready for a ticket, and then it turns out that they don't have to pay, or it gets played down to something, or if they hear that the ticket was dismissed, well, who does he know that the ticket gets dismissed? I mean, I think that's a pretty common feeling in the public for people who have not gone through municipal court or have heard second or third story rumors about that. So, I mean, hopefully, that discussion is important or meaningful to people who are familiar with the court. The next question I have, I had several people, actually, my wife has had a number of people in the community complain to her about the number of speeding tickets given in the community, and concerned that we're going to become the next Forrest Gump, and comments like, well, gee, how much money does the city get from revenue from the municipal court? It's a moneymaker, et cetera, et cetera. So, I asked the auditor specifically about that question. I said, when you looked at, in the audit, you looked at the revenue for the City of Warrenton, did you consider the number of tickets or the dollar amount that was assessed to the court excessive? And his comment was that they really didn't look at it per se, because what they do is they come and they look at the city's revenue as a whole, and then they look at the court revenue as a percentage of that, and clearly, in the City of Warrenton, the percentage of court revenue to the total revenue of the city isn't significant. So, they didn't see it as something that they needed to pursue any farther. And in fairness to some of the comments in the public, I think it's hard to find court numbers. I mean, I was thrilled when we got this report this last time from the clerk that showed the monthly activity, and you could see where the dollars are going. Because sometimes when I look for financial stuff for the court, they don't have the whole court activity on the city's audit. Court activity must sit on the audit of the circuit, I guess. And so, we see the portion that comes in through up to the city, and we see the expenses the city incurs, but we don't see the whole picture. And so, I think it was very helpful, and whoever decided to put that in the pack this time, I really appreciate that. And just to kind of give the public an idea of where some of this funding goes, this is the report for June of this year. You know, two thousand dollars of the funding went to a crime victim compensation fund. The domestic violence shelter received five hundred and sixty-four dollars. The inmate security fund, whatever that is, came up with five hundred and ninety-four dollars. There was fourteen hundred dollars restitution. So, even though if you look at the court, and I think the audit talked about over six hundred thousand coming into the court, a lot of that's being distributed to various funds to, for community betterment, to help victims and all that. So, you can't look at the municipal court total and say, well, gee, it's, the city just got six hundred thousand dollars from the municipal court, because the city didn't get six hundred thousand from the municipal court, because it's going in very different directions. But I'm just kind of curious as, what the police chief thinks about, you know, the dollar amounts that, or the number of tickets that are being processed, is, do we have any experience to say something excessive? I'm looking at June, there was two hundred and six non-traffic things. I assume that's like weed ordinances and stuff like that. And there was two hundred and forty-eight traffic tickets. Is that typical, or is that what you'd expect in a community this size?
Yeah, I think that's pretty normal. Back when I first started, our numbers were actually significantly higher.
Sorry?
And, you know, the whole point of traffic enforcement is to change driving behavior.
Right.
And I think what we've seen is a trend from that point down, which indicates to me that we've successfully changed driving behavior. You know, I hear our guys talk all the time about how it's kind of hard to find tickets or violators, which I think is a good thing.
Right.
So, you know, the fact that the numbers are coming down, I think, you know, shows that the guys are getting the job done, and we are actually changing driving behavior.
Right. Okay, that's good. And the other thing on this report, it said that the city received six thousand four hundred dollars, of which we have to pay expenses out of that, too. So, it's not a big cash generator that I think sometimes we get the impression it is. And that's all I have on this. Hopefully, people found it interesting. I found it interesting to talk to the auditor, to, you know, just learn a little bit more about it, because I was here when the municipal court was started years ago, and, you know, you have an understanding at a certain level, but you really don't have a full understanding until you have a few more experiences. So, I thought that was helpful. The last thing I got, and I'll keep this brief, I want to get on my bully pulpit for a moment. The article came out in the newspaper, "City Seeks Where are Approval Funds for New Highway 7 Air Change." And I was shocked to see this in the paper, and I didn't know why it came out. And then I noticed that there was a public notice that listed the properties. And I told the mayor today, I fundamentally have a real problem with the city allowing fourteen or twenty-eight individuals to impose a tax on the whole community. It seems, I told him, it seems like that's what our forefathers fought for when they threw tea into the Boston Harbor, that they were being taxed, but they weren't receiving representation. And to me, I look at this as the city's advocating that responsibility to a handful of property owners. And then it became even more frustrating, because I took a list of the listing, and I'm sure they followed state guidelines of the location. So, I went out to the assessor's site, and I thought, oh, I'm going to start looking up and find out who these fourteen residences are. Well, you go out to the site for location, you type in the numbers, and the site doesn't work. So, okay, so if I want to influence the voter, how do I determine who that voter is? And so, I called up the assessor's office, and I said, hey, your site's not working. She said, well, let me go out. So, we were at the site together, and she typed in locator numbers, couldn't get it work. She said, well, you type in the names, it works fine. Well, I don't know the names, that's the whole purpose of the search. So, she said, well, try later on. So, I tried this for three days, and I haven't been able to come up with the names of the people on this list. And I don't know, to me, it just, I just don't feel comfortable allowing fourteen or eight, twenty-eight people to impose a tax on a community of eight thousand.
I'm going to interrupt you there, because you've been going on for twenty minutes now, but I want to interrupt instead of waiting for getting my thought on that.
Sure.
They're not going to all be taxed. I only get taxed if I choose to go there. So, they're not imposing a tax on me. They are not imposing a tax on me because I can shop anywhere I want.
Well, I guess the founding fathers, the King of England could have said to the founding fathers, well, if you don't want to pay the tax, why don't you go to France? And the reality is, is...
Completely different, Gary.
It's exactly, no, it's the exact same issue.
You're going on.
It's the exact same issue.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is. You know, and I just don't see how this is right. I don't see how we as a community can support this. I'm not saying the bridge is unformed, I'm not saying the intersection's important, it should be done, but I think I have a real problem still with the process.
That's fine.
Did you finish?
I'm done now.
You're done?
I told you, I cautioned you again.
Yeah, you cautioned me.
All right.
Very brief.
All right.
A lot of the things that Gary brought to the table, I feel, are very important to the general population. That's why you're going to see another town hall meeting in Ward 1 in the month of August, to where the people can come, because there's a lot of people here that are here every week, but there's a lot of people that that information is good for that will come to a general meeting on Ward 1.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
I had a couple of things on my list. I'm going to be fairly brief, because I think most of mine's been covered already. I'll reiterate what John Cornell said about the concert in the park. Really a neat deal, and if you're not taking advantage of that, you should. The Fine Arts Council, the Park Board, and actually, a big thanks to Mike Shaw, because he does a lot of work and helps orchestrate that. So, that's a fun evening. It's cost-free and enjoyable evening, and drag your lawn chairs out and sit under the trees and listen to some good music. So, if you're not taking advantage of that, you probably need to reconsider that. The people that were here last meeting on the sewer issues, the backup issues over in Warren Avenue, we are looking into that. I think we're committed to finding out what that issue is every time we have a five-inch rain that sewers back up in houses, and we're working on that. We talked with Guy again tonight, and we looked at our policies, and we're going to get it fixed, it's just going to take some time. Not going to happen overnight, it's a long, slow process. Wanted to remind the board that there is a retirement situation coming up for Steve Etcher from Boonslick Planning on the 22nd of July, from 5 until 7, at the Knights of Columbus Hall. So, if anybody's available, feel free to attend that. The other thing I want to mention to them is the new company coming to Warren County, Montgomery County, Certainty, is having a tree planting ceremony on July 24th at 10:30 at the property location there off of Scudders Ranch Road. Governor Nixon has indicated that he's going to be there and attend, so if you're available, you might want to attend that. Fred Tett touched upon the Highway 47 paving project, and MoDOT has notified us on the 25th of Ju, or week of the 25th of July, they're going to be paving from Hawk Point all the way to I-70 here in Warrenton on 47. The paving project is going to take place at night from 7:00 PM in the evening to 6:00 AM in the morning. So, if you travel that road, you might want to be cautious and careful out there. I'm not going to dwell too long, because Gary pretty well covered everything on our municipal court rating, our good rating. And the only thing I was going to say is, sometimes audits are good, because they do find things that we might be doing wrong or that we need to correct. And I think Counselor Gavill will probably agree to this, that we've corrected all of our deficiencies, have everything in place and moving forward. So, not going to dwell on that. And that's all I have. And I'm ready to move on to item seven, introduction of new employees. Who wants to take care of that?
I'll take care of this.
Okay.
We have three new employees. First employee is Mike Hargrove, working for the street department. Stand up, Mike.
Yes, hello.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mike.
Welcome aboard.
Glad to have you.
Glad to be here.
Next person I have is Aaron LeChance, he's a wastewater treatment plant.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
And Tim Quinn, hope you're meter reader.
Hey.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Enjoy the tan.
You gentlemen are welcome to stick around if you'd like to.
Well, this house is going to be tomorrow, I think, we'll go home and get some water.
Okay, smart man.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice to meet you all.
Guy, have you got anything else there?
Not right now.
Okay.
Guy? Thank you.
I'm going to move on. I'm on item eight. Next item is a request to close the Falling Road to September 21, 2013, for a 5K run for Slim's Journey. And I see Slim's mom and dad here, and I'm going to let them tell us what's going on. It seems like we see them about once a year.
Well, this will be my second time coming through, and I appreciate the board's time, and yours as well, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm going to start off with, last time I was up here, I asked to host a run that we had in September of last year, and it, the overwhelming success that it turned out to be was incredible. We hosted the run to raise money for freakers of toxia research and try to find a cure for a disease that's incurable, which a member of my family has, my son, he doesn't want me to bring it up, but oh, well. Anyhow, I want to say thanks, because we hosted a run last year that brought in three hundred and fifty people to town.
Great.
We raised over twenty thousand dollars. And so, outstanding success. Only problem is, now we've got to try to do a little bit better this year, right? So, we're going to get some more folks out. Our request is on September 21st, and on the backside of that registration form is the route. We're hosting a run, it's a 5K run, 2.5K walk. The only thing different this year from last year was we just had the 5K route, and so we implemented the walk part where, as the route comes up from Donovan Pinkney up into Roy into Boschel, we're just going to have the walkers cut across Boschel over to Cool to head up towards, back towards the Methodist Church. That would be the big difference this year from last. Again, we'd like to be able to mark the streets. It worked out fairly well. I don't believe there were any complaints about it. But the stencil that I had was about fifteen inches, and it wasn't, I made it in red and blue paint, so it wasn't very, it was visible to those walking and running, but it wasn't to the citizens of the city. So, I think that's about all I have.
How many runners did you have last year?
We ended up with about three hundred out of three hundred and fifty registrants. We had a lot of people, and we're hoping to grow again this year. We had folks come up from Kentucky, families from Kansas City. There's a family out of St. Charles, I think they brought probably forty people, just themselves.
Great. Great. Are we getting some support from our police department?
We had outstanding support from the police department. We had outstanding support from the police department. We've already got, we already talked to Truesdale, and they're going to take care of the Pinkney side of it while we're in their city. And, yeah, we're, everything went too smooth last year.
No, it wasn't just smooth enough.
Yeah, it was good.
I will say, I know Alderman Casserly and myself both participated. I walked, didn't run. Thank you.
I did too.
A very enjoyable time for a very good cause. Maybe we can top 400 people this year.
That's my goal. I'd like to see a lot more folks from, this is my hometown. You know, I've had to move away here and there for work, but I always consider work my hometown. That's why we decided to add it back here, so hopefully we'll see more people.
And I know that more than one person have commented that the stencil has, was used throughout the year. That, that gave them a knowledgeable 5K route. They didn't have to measure it. So, they continue to use it throughout the, the year for those that run for a hobby. I don't understand that.
They want chubby stick people stencils.
No, it's work.
Any more questions for Mr. Meyer?
Any motion?
He either let her voluntarily run and erase.
I'll make a motion in that case, and we accept the application for the 5K run.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the application to close the streets from Route M from College Inn and Methodist Church West to West Street at 7:45 to 8:15. Northbound lane of Cool Avenue from Boschel to Route M, 8:15 to 9:00 AM. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, I was going to suggest that if Alderman Casserly and Cornell want to run, then maybe some of us might pledge. I'll do that. I'll, I'll do that.
You got more to say?
We'll take that in, in consideration. All right. I'm going to move, move on to item number nine. And number nine is discussion and finalization of Attorney Chris Greville's contract for the upcoming year. We kind of, we kind of postponed this last meeting and did a little more research, and maybe we can come to a finalization tonight. One of the things I found out in researching attorney salaries, there, there is no standard mold. Every city, every municipality is different. I, I found a range from $75 an hour to $250 an hour. A lot of it depends on which, which law firm is handling it, which attorney within the law firm is handling it. Not sure where to go on that. I, I think what I would share with the board in visiting with Mr. Greville, that we, we kind of agreed upon a, a price of $135 per hour for his law firm, and beyond that, I don't think we finalized anything. Am I, am I telling basically where we're at?
Yeah, basically what we talked about was the idea of doing $135 an hour with a retainer at the 522 hours, which is a pretty good average of what I do per year. Probably a little bit low, but, you know, that I'd be willing to do that, and that you thought that was a reasonable idea.
And, and you've been averaging the last couple of years around that 500 to 525?
Yeah, I would say probably more than that.
More than that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think Terry would probably agree that that's a conservative estimate.
Okay.
Those are the hours either on the phone with staff here or present in the city.
Okay.
Not accounting for hours-
Research time, drafting.
Other hours. That we have no idea what those are.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm opening this up for discussion to see what the board, where you want to go with this.
When you say retainer, you talk about cap?
No, basically how we do it now is we have a retainer agreement, which is how some cities do it, where I get paid a monthly stipend that basically is a catch-all, or basically that covers all my services for that time period that, for that month, for example. That would be kind of like an average out in which, you know, the city would get, for that price, my services for that month. Does that make sense?
Well, how does the rate figure other than multiply times the number of hours?
That, that's just-
So, there's, so we're still at a retainer? There's no hourly rate?
Yeah. That, that was just trying to figure out, that was just like, really, that number was even generated from the last discussion that was brought up to me. Like, trying to find, you know, because I, I don't think the health insurance was something that would work. You know, after discussing it with the mayor and discussing with Terry, it just wouldn't work with some of the issues that were brought up. So, it was trying to look at an alternative to that.
I believe that the county's rate is, they just selected an attorney. That's the closest government body to compare ourselves to, both size-wise and geographically. And I believe their contract is $135 an hour.
Right.
So, we're talking $70,470?
Right.
Flat.
Yeah, and I told the mayor that I said, I said I'd be willing to do that as a two-year, not, a contract with an attorney is never guaranteed. It's not a 30-day out. You guys can tell me to walk out of here right now, and I'm obligated to follow my client, follow my client's wishes. But, I told the mayor that I would do that for two years at that amount. And if you guys wanted to renegotiate it next year, if you felt like there wasn't that amount of hours, we could do that as well. But, I told the mayor that I'd be happy to keep that at that for a two-year period.
So, what we would do with the $70,000 is split that up on a 12-month basis?
Yes.
And basically, that would be the salary and the payment.
What's the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
What's the current retainer?
Sixty.
So, you're looking at a 17% increase, basically?
Yeah. But, you also, one of the reasons, and this is what I think is somewhat of the misconception out there, is the municipal court, when, you know, there was the idea that was, well, this is what you agreed to originally, blah, blah, blah. Terry and I had had discussions because the municipal court was originally a two-hour event. I would come out here in an afternoon, do the municipal court. Now, it starts at 8:30 and it goes till 4, 4:30. We usually do a court meeting afterwards, you know, that we kind of started doing with the audit that I think is a real positive way to stay on top of everything. So, you know, that's probably the biggest change is, you know, being out here for a full day. I mean, the research and the phone calls and the meetings have been consistent. You know, pretty consistent, I would say.
I think so. I'd like to make a motion that we retain Chris Greville's services for an annual retainer of $70,470 for a two-year term. Can be negotiable if needed after the one-year term.
Second.
Last question. Do you, right now, you're under an open-ended contract?
Yes.
And, so, what you're proposing is to make it a, a contract with a termination date on?
And, and I want to make sure this is clear. I'm glad you asked, Alderman Ock. I have to be under the Missouri bar retained by a written agreement.
Right.
I'm different than any, you know, any other employee. I have to be retained by a written agreement under my ethics canons. It is, it, it would be, basically, it would be an agreement that would say it would be renewed for the same amount of money, but you guys obviously would have to make the decision whether or not you would want to renew it again next year for the same rate. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Something I might add that, that was a big factor with, with me is the accessibility of Mr. Greville. If I, if I need, or Terry, or Guy, or anybody, if we need a, an issue, we need a legal opinion on, I can pick up the phone and I can dial his number. I don't get his secretary. I don't get another legal staff member. Chris either answers the phone or calls me back within five minutes. Kind of a, kind of an important issue with me, I think, that we're not strung out for a day or two.
Yeah, and we're not limited to worrying about what hours we're using up.
Yeah.
Although I think we did have this discussion, I would encourage you to keep your own manual list of, of hours.
Well, and I've done time studies before on hours, and that's part of kind of what generated some of the discussions with Terry was studying the hours. I'm like, you know, I'm really putting a lot, a lot of time into this, but I, I, you know, I mean, that, that, that's, you know, fine. I, I can absolutely do that for you guys to review, and trust me, if you think Terry's going to let me slide by without those hours, you haven't worked with her long enough to know that she's going to squeeze every minute of those hours out of me, plus.
Is that what Alderman Ock, you're asking for, as a, as a time study?
No, 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 no. I was simply asking the question, is right now, I, it's still bad for why we're even having this discussion because the attorney was under an open-ended contract, so there was no reason to negotiate the contract. But, now that we've negotiated the contract, the question I have, is this still going to be open-ended, or is this a contract that has a defined stop date on it? Or is it still an open-ended contract? That was my question.
It, it, I mean, yes. I mean, essentially, it'll be open-ended, and I would serve until somebody else was appointed unless you guys said, "We don't want you to serve anymore." So, it, you know, just by nature of its appointment, it's open-ended, you know? So, yeah, it'll be open-ended, but there's no provision that says you have to give me any notice. Like I said, if you guys voted to terminate it today, I would have to leave. You guys always get to choose your representation. There's no, I have no typical contractual rights that someone would have in that situation recourse.
And we pay you on a monthly basis?
Yes.
Based on that rate over that 12-month period?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from that end? Questions on the, this side of the board? Have a motion on the floor by Alderman Casserly, seconded by Alderman Dryer to retain Mr. Greville's law firm in the amount of retainer $70,470 a year for a two-year term. Roll call vote, please, if there's no other discussion.
I, I do have one question. Is, is it proper for the motion be for us to retain him if it's a, if it's an appointment by the mayor? Shouldn't we be voting to confirm your appointment?
Yeah, really, I, I mean, I might have to bring a written agreement back unless you guys want to authorize the mayor. You know, the mayor could do his appointment for a city attorney and city prosecutor, and then authorize the mayor to sign an agreement. You guys have seen the agreement. It's pretty standard.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
So, do I need to amend my motion to give the mayor the authority to appoint Chris Greville?
Yeah. Well, I think the mayor has to say, "I'm moved, you know, I'm making my appointment." And then, you can table your motion, have the mayor, if he's going to do the appointments, do the appointments, and then revisit your motion, amend it to give the mayor the authority, and then vote.
It is awfully complicated, but I, I will make, I'll move to make that appointment to retain Chris Greville's law firm in the amount of $70,470 for a two-year period.
And then a motion to approve the appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of the Greville Law Firm. One last comment?
I'll second it first.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Casserly to approve the mayor's appointment of the Greville Law Firm. Now, can I have a roll call vote?
Gary, you got a vote? I just, I just, I think in the interest of making sure that we're above board, that before you sign anything, that somebody else reviews it, maybe a different attorney reviews it. It protects Chris. It protects the city. So, when Terry coming back saying, "Well, he created his own contract. How do we know he created?" Right, you're not a lawyer. I'm not a lawyer. And I just think it protects the public.
The agreement that I use is an agreement that John Hassel, who's a longtime city attorney from Florissant and from, it's pretty much, he pretty much standardized the attorney contract. But, I have no problem with that. It, it's a pretty simple agreement that I, I actually use. And Gary, I'd be happy to send it to you, and it's been the same agreement that I've used in the past.
Yeah, well, I, I wouldn't do anything about a lawyer. I just, I did stay at the Holiday Inn, but I'm not a lawyer. So, I mean, I just think from the, from the public perspective, if we take that step, which can't be that costly, to fax a copy of a two-hour, and they go, "Oh, yeah, it's standard. Okay, fine." I think that's what we do to protect the public.
I don't, I don't have any issue with that. Any problems down here?
I don't.
I mean, is it, I mean, is, is there another local attorney here in town or something we could use?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with using any local attorney.
I, I just don't need, I, I don't have a problem with it other than it's going to cost money, and it's a situation where we're entering into an agreement that we could terminate at any moment. I, I just don't need, I, I don't see the need to spend any additional money on something that it isn't a binding obligation to us. That's, that's my only comment on it.
What's the opinion on this end?
I agree with John.
You don't think we need to waste money?
I, I trust him on all our other legal issues. I mean, if I didn't trust him to hire him to represent us, you know, I trust that the document that he thoroughly reviewed with his peers is, is adequate if we can get rid of it, if we need to get rid of it. I mean, I think sometimes we can overcheck ourselves.
Alderman Clark, you a comment down there?
I'm fine with it as long as the mayor is fine with it. He's the one signing it. We can yell at him later.
Any comments on that end?
I think it's fine.
We're, we're, we're fine with leaving it as is.
And Alderman Ock, I'll send you a copy of it because-
That's fine.
That'll be fine. Where are we at on this? Did we, did we vote on this yet?
No.
We need to vote. Need to vote, call vote.
Roll call of the appointment.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Now, I think you guys have to vote to approve, to sign the contracts because that vote was for the appointment.
What was that? I didn't hear.
Yeah, to approve, to sign.
To, to give him authority to sign.
Yeah, I already had a second on that.
I make a motion to-
You already have that. It's just a vote, roll call vote on that.
I, I made the motion. You seconded it.
And then you seconded it already. So, we just need a roll of the vote.
What were you?
I was glad about that.
That was- Can the clerk read the motion back?
The clerk is thoroughly confused, right?
The vote, the last vote was for the appointment. This votes for the contract.
That's just plenty.
Couldn't there be one else?
Well, they can approve the mayor to sign it. We can bring the order next time.
I can't say it again. We've got a long list of them.
Okay.
Wait, what do you have? Do you have something down there? Motion to, for the mayor to sign the contract for Chris Greville's services on annual retainer at $70,470 renewable on an annual term paid over 12 months.
Got a second on that?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Casserly, seconded by Alderman Cornell. You got all that down, Melody?
I think so.
Read it back one more time.
No.
I don't have it all.
Okay. This is for the mayor to sign the contract to appoint Chris Greville's law firm for a amount, two-year contract for $70,470, and is negotiable at any time.
And it's an annual contract.
And it's an annual contract.
Annual contract, okay. Roll call now.
Alderman Clark?
Wait a second. I'm processing all this.
I need to drink.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Motion carried five to one. Are we done with, with Mr. Greville? Anybody else have any comments?
Not a lot.
All right, I'm, I'm ready to move on to item number 10, discussion of employment contracts for Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, and Greg Hottish, our Chief of Police. I don't know where to start on this. Since I've been mayor, I've probably spent more time fielding, more questions, been more involved with this issue than any other issue within the city of Warrenton. If, if there's a way to end this, I'm all for it. And, and I think we have some opportunities presenting this help to us that maybe we can, we can put this to rest. I think it's caused some division within the previous board, caused some division within this board. I think it's put undue stress on Chief Hottishell and on Terry Thorne. I, I think they've had enough of it, and they, they've came forward and said, "We're willing to do something different and, and give up these contracts." So, I'm going to open it up to discussion to the board. So I'm gonna open it up to discussion to the board. Where, where do you, as a board, wanna go with this?
Oh, you know, I, they have, I have seen, I've spoken with Ms. Thorne. I haven't had a chance to speak with the chief lately. I believe that from day one, I had been clear with both of them and with some of the aldermen and the former mayor, and I, I didn't think the contracts were the right thing, and I didn't think they were necessary. That being said, you also have to recognize that those contracts were offered, voted on, and authorized by a, an elected board. What they did, they had the power to do. Whether or not they should have done it, they did have the power to do it. The one thing that I will say is it's been a very, very divisive issue. To her credit, every time I've discussed the contracts with, with Ms. Thorne, and when Mr. Miller was here and polled the board, I've always been upfront with her in my distaste for those contracts. And we've just agreed to disagree. I think the fact that she has come forward and the chief has come forward and said, "You know, we don't, we don't need these contracts. We, we are willing to continue our employment as an at-will employee speaks volumes to their character." I know that there, there are two distinct issues here. I know that there are members of our community who have an issue with the contracts. There are other members of our community that have an issue with Ms. Thorne. This is gonna address the contract issue if, if they voluntarily give those up. I, I, I think that the, the part of this that has been unfair towards Ms. Thorne, and she is certainly a city employee who opens herself up to criticism of the way that she does her job, each alderman, each elected official is the same way. What I don't think is necessarily fair to either one of those employees is to villainize them for accepting a contract that was offered to them. All they did was accepted what was offered. That would be no more, no more than accepting healthcare or, or a salary raise that, that was controversial. They accepted something that was offered to them. And I don't fault them for, for doing that. And, and I guess that's what people kind of lose in the, in the scheme of things. I, I think that the board that authorized those, I think the mayor that authorized those are certainly open to criticism, although what they did was, was legal. I don't think that Ms. Thorne and the chief did anything wrong by accepting those. I think in hindsight, they've done damage to their reputation that, that I hope is repaired or can start being repaired now. So hopefully, we can put this, put this behind us. I criticize the person for the performance that they do, but don't criticize them for, for accepting something. I, I think that many people would sit back and say, "You know, I, if that was offered to me, I wouldn't accept it." I believe that our counselor was offered the same type of agreement and, and turned it down. I would like to think that if offered that, I would turn that down and say, "You know, I'm gonna stand on my job performance and on my merits." That being said, I wasn't in that position. That wasn't a decision that I had to make. So the fact that we are able to put those aside now, hopefully, we can get on to doing important city business without that distraction. Man, that was a lot of words.
It was a lot of words.
You didn't have to quote that.
Well, this is the part of the minutes where she said, "And the board discussed." And there's an action.
I'm gonna go this, I'm gonna go this direction, if you don't mind, Alderman Ock. I'm gonna ask Alderman Kessley for her input on this.
Well, John has covered a lot of the bases. I think my, my main input to the city, and this has been the case since I've been elected to this office, anybody who's wanted to talk to me about these contracts, forget that the contracts exist. The city citizens should be holding the board accountable for the decisions that are made for the city. This board of aldermen choose who to hire and who to fire, and we're the ones who make the decisions. If you do not like the decisions we make, that's why every two years, the citizens of this town have the right to fire us. And I'm fine with that. But for a long time, everybody has held these people accountable for the decisions that they do not like. And if that is still the case, then you are wrong, and your aggravation and your anger and your disgust falls on this board, not those individuals sitting there as the head of your departments. That's what I want this town to know, because I'm tired of defending people for the things that they've been told to do. So to me, yes, I agree. I'm, I'm happy this can clear this up. And I fully support these individuals that are working on our behalf. Since April and even before that, when I had the opportunity to meet with them and learn about the ins and outs of this city, I have yet to find a reason why I would be disappointed in the individuals that run our city on our behalf.
Okay. Now, Ms. Alderman Ock, I'm moving your way.
Yeah, I think the public needs to know that what the aldermen have in front of them is a letter from Terry and, and the police chief. It basically reads, "I wish to voluntarily terminate my employment agreement dated April third, two thousand twelve with the City of Warrenton and continue my employment with the city as an at-will employee effective July thirteenth, two thousand thirteen." And I, and I also commend you for doing that. I, my whole life, been very weighted based on my performance and not under a piece of paper, and I commend you for taking that step. And rather than lecture with the public, which I know is shocking, I, I think what I'd like to do is propose an action step that as we get through the whole discussion, at least we have something to vote up and down on. And so what I'd like to do is to make a proposal or make a motion that the city attorney be directed to draft an ordinance, not renew the contracts of Terry Thorne and Greg Hottishell at the end of the current period. And I would like to seek a second on that and then make a couple more comments, and I'll yield to John.
I'll make a second on that.
Thank you. The reason I, I, I wanna do it that way is because I think it, it puts the steps in motion for the board to make a decision tonight, and then the documentation that was submitted by Terry and, and the police chief could be submitted to council, and council could look to see if, is this the proper way to voluntarily terminate it? Because what we have is a real simple document. We're trying to close out a legal document, and I don't know if, if the document should have a signature of the mayor on it, should have the signature of the employees, should be noted on it. I don't know that. But I think if we make a decision tonight and then turn it over to the counselor, then he can come back at the next meeting and, and go ahead and tell us what the proper direction is. The proper direction is not to write the ordinance, but simply to accept the paper. I think that's fine. If it's to accept the ordinance, I think that's fine, too. So that's the idea behind my motion. John?
Okay. So right, right now, I have a motion on the floor by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Cardnell. And your, your motion is to...
Draft an ordinance.
Renew the existing?
Contracts at the end of the current period.
New term.
And for the sake of the public, I think we've informed the legal counsel that this is a acceptable course that the city could take on these contracts, that the idea of an open-ended contract doesn't have a whole lot of weight in, in court. So...
And along with that motion, then you wanna instruct the, the, our legal counsel to draft that ordinance?
Well, I wanted to do the ordinance, but I also wanted to take the documentation that was submitted by the two employees and look to see if that's sufficient for doing the same thing as opposed to the ordinance.
Have the ordinance ready in case he doesn't believe that's sufficient, and then...
Or if he, or if he says, "We can modify the letters, sign it. There's no need for an ordinance." I'm happy with that.
Okay. I understand. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go this, this direction.
John has, he has time to talk.
I know, but I ain't ready, but I'm not ready.
John does have to score the ballgame on a screen occasionally.
Alderman Flake, I'm ready for your comments.
Well, I think the contracts, I've supported the contracts all the way through. I thought they were needed at, at the time when they were devised. But if the two people that are mentioned in the contracts, if they voluntarily decide that they wanna terminate them and get rid of them, so be it. That's their decision.
Okay. Alderman Clark, now I'm ready for you. And I don't wanna hear a ballgame report either.
I would like to thank the two employees for coming forward with the voluntary cancellation of the contracts. Hopefully, this will move everything on and, and the city will run smoother. And I think the people maybe appreciate the, the two employees as much as we have. So I'm excited about this, and thank you very much.
Alderman Dyer?
I ain't got nothing to say about it.
You're, you're good with this direction.
Could I, can you yield five minutes?
No, I'm not giving you five minutes. But if you gotta...
No, I just wanted to acknowledge something. You know, since I've been elected for the last ten minutes, I probably average three phone calls a, a week from different constituents with issues. And, and I've acknowledged Terry has been very supportive of helping us work through those issues and hopefully satisfy the, the taxpayer that at least their issue was addressed, whether it was to their satisfaction or not. So, so I think we're starting to develop a pretty good working rapport on those issues, and I appreciate that, because it's hard to answer phone calls from constituents when you don't have the ability to talk to them.
I agree. I, I'm not taking any comments from the audience, but...
Only if that was addressed as long as...
I do think, I, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think this is a way to put this issue behind us. And I, and I really have to thank you two people for stepping up to the plate, saying, "You know what? We've had enough of this, too." So I, I commend you, and I appreciate it. And at this time, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Thank you.
Well, that feels like four months.
Pardon? I'm ready to move on to, if, our, our councillor Graville, do you have any questions on, or are you pretty well clear on what the board's asking you?
I, I'm assuming the vote was on Gary's motion that I'm supposed to draft the ordinance. Get the ordinance ready for the next meeting.
That's correct.
Give me a chance to review.
Okay.
Yes.
And then we'll, and we, we also wanna clear out the termination statements. We want those looked at to see whether everything's legal on that and we can make that work.
I think the point is, we want, we want you to look at and say, "What's the best course, given the fact that the employees have asked that the contracts be termination? We were advised earlier that the non-renewal of the ordinance was the proper path. We're looking for your blessing as to which way to go."
Okay, good. I'm ready to move on to cemetery committee discussion. Who's in charge of that?
Is that me?
The chair.
Okay. This was an issue that was brought up to the committee about some long-held funeral plots that we have. The owner is deceased, and they're trying to clear out the estate. The committee got together and discussed this, and the decision on the committee was that we would buy back these lots at a hundred dollars a lot. Currently, cemetery plots are two hundred dollars a plot. But in this case, there's no records, there's no history, there's no, nothing to go back on, other than the fact that they want to sell them back to the city. So the cemetery committee has agreed to a hundred dollars per lot to, to buy back those lots.
Have you had the opportunity to contact the owner or the executor of that estate and see if that is a...
I have not.
Wait until...
Any emotions? Approve the recommendation?
Yes. Do you also have the second part about the twenty-four dollars for the recording fee? Do you want to add that?
Correct. We also have a recording fee to make sure it's all documented so that future history, we know who owns the lots and have a record. So we would require the individuals who are selling those lots back to the city to also pay the recording fee of twenty-four dollars.
But I believe that's going forward, anybody from now on that buys a lot, correct?
Yes, going for, well, once the ordinance is, is passed. But it's twenty-four dollars for the first page and three dollars for the additional page, and the max is usually three pages.
So we're requiring the seller to pay those fees as opposed to the buyer, which normally is what happens?
And, and why don't we say that we require the seller of the lots to pay? No.
No.
No, the buyer of the lots to pay the recording fees. We don't want the price in there in case those, those prices change over time.
Okay. I've got a question, then. So was the, it wasn't my understanding that the city was going to offer to pay a hundred dollars per lot and pay a, a recording fee? We're not gonna record. Is there a...
No, we record.
I would record it, but they would be responsible for paying for it when they pay for the cemetery lot.
Under normal circumstances, what about these lots that we're talking about purchasing? Who's gonna pay for the recording fees on those?
They would go back to...
They should.
Yeah, they're ours.
I don't know how the buyer can not, whether they're a fee. I mean, you're the buyer.
We're paying a hundred point four, a hundred thirty dollars per lot.
Yeah.
You know, we would just pay the recording fee.
Look, we're gonna pay the hundred dollars, but we pay the recording fee. Is that what we're hearing?
Correct.
We're gonna get it, we're gonna collect it back when we sell it.
Exactly. Exactly.
So we're gonna net seventy-five bucks after expenses.
Correct. And then, because there's so few lots out there, eventually, guys, before we're probably off the board, we're gonna be pushing those lots.
Yep.
So the motion is to buy back the lots for a hundred dollars that have been brought to our attention. And the second part of the motion is to require any future purchases of cemetery plots to pay the recording fees.
And if, just have, you know, have Chris draw up an ordinance?
For each page.
And then you guys, we can bring it to you at the next meeting?
Correct.
So if you just wanna approve those changes?
I'll second the motion.
Who seconded? John?
John.
Okay. Alderman Kessley made the motion. Alderman Clark seconded. The motion is for the city to buy back cemetery lots in the amount of one hundred dollars each and, and pay the recording fees.
And the, the lot owner would pay the recording fee also.
Okay. All right.
Then we're the lot owner.
Yes. In this instance, we would be. But from going forward, it would be any new person coming in and purchasing a lot would be the lot owner, and they would be paying for their...
Right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. What about item twelve amended agenda items? Would we amend?
We did not amend any. Well, we added personnel at the bottom.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm not worried about that now. Item thirteen, Michelle Hunter, Economic Development Director.
Good evening. We have my economic development report for you and the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council update in the packet. Do you have any questions on that?
Yeah, I, I thought the activity in the contact area was very interesting. It seems like a lot is going on. Now, how much of that comes to fruition is a different issue, but it sounds like that there are people interested in the community that are interested in bringing businesses in. And, you know, the question I was, is, is what can we do to help make them seal the deal?
And that's just up to them. I mean, Frank is here from the outlet mall, and with that, that we actually have an announcement that we do have a new business going into the outlet mall. It's called Fast Mall, and they are a contracting company. They have over twenty-six hundred stores and over ten thousand people working for them, and they sell construction supplies. And they are actually working and going into the outlet mall. Hopefully, we'll be seeing them opening very soon. They don't have a ribbon-cutting date or grand opening date or anything at this time, but, but we do have that. And he's got some other individuals that are looking, looking to go out there, but with government changes and healthcare changes and everything, a lot of people are holding off, waiting to see what's going on with that. So...
Is this a retail store?
This is, yes.
Okay. Now, can you explain, I'm still not clear, did the outlet center become, get on a new ownership? And is that ownership out of Columbia or is it out of Las Vegas?
No. It does have new ownership. The new ownership registered address is out of Las Vegas.
Okay.
They have a new managing company, which is out of...
Columbia.
Columbia, Missouri. The old managing company was Woodmont Tex, out of Texas.
Okay.
The new one is out of Columbia. And then we have Frank, who is an onsite manager, and then he is also the executive for leasing.
So where's this new facility going to go in the mall?
It is going in, I believe where KB Toys was, in that strip center at the opposite end of West Barn.
Do you have much contact with the company out of Columbia that's representing the owners?
I contact them and give it back with them and forth, asking them what's going on and everything. But now that Frank is there, I've pretty much been contacting with him and keeping up with him.
Are you, you're Frank?
Yes, sir.
All right. Are you there on a full-time basis in Warrenton?
I work from eight to twelve hours a day.
That's full-time. That's full-time. Okay. Well, welcome to the community, if you haven't had that extended to. And we hope you have great success out there, because our sales tax number sure could help, use that help.
And the only other thing I have is that the mayor did mention certain teeth groundbreaking. They were going to plant a tree. They're just gonna do a groundbreaking now, since they're moving so much dirt. They were afraid they'd plant the tree and someone would run over their new tree. So we'll have a groundbreaking July twenty-fourth at ten thirty a.m. If you plan to attend, please let me know, and I will RSVP for all of us that are looking to attend.
Okay. I, I think I let somebody know already.
Okay.
I was, I was gonna be there, but I, I can't remember who I, who I told that. Somebody, somebody called or asked about it. So put me down.
Can I do a follow-up question to, to her?
Sure.
And I promise you, Alderman Kessley, I will not rant and rave about this any further. But I have received a number of phone calls from people who live on Briarwood, who said that the, the district, that they were contacted by you about the district, but they didn't see their property listed in the notice. Does it cover all of Briar Road, Briarwood Road, or is it just a portion of it?
It does not. It just covers a portion. Originally, went out talking to different individuals and talked to more individuals just to kind of see and talk to people. And also wanted to see what people thought of the interchange, whether they would be in the TDD or not. But just went out and kind of talked to them since they would be between where the two interchanges are.
Yeah. Because I told them I'd get back with them, kind of clarify that to...
It does not, not all of it, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That didn't take that long.
No.
Thank you.
What else you got?
That was all I had for you.
That's all? All right. Thank you. I'm ready for item fourteen. Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, Finance Officer. Terry?
We are back to discussing, once again, cleaning companies. Last meeting, we talked about your desire not to have the low bidder subcontract with a cleaning company. We then went to the second low bidder, which is King out of St. Louis, Missouri, asked them about whether or not they would be using any kind of subcontractors. And I think someone mentioned... And I think someone mentioned at the meeting that they thought they were a franchise company and they in fact are.
Right.
And did ask them if we were to award them the bid, if they could provide us with information on who the subcontractor would be, with the thought that we would then research that company. Their response was that they are unable to give us who the franchisee would be until there's a signed contract. So I don't think we want to go down that trail, based on your discussions last meeting. So tonight, I am asking you to approve the third lowest bidder, which is Citywide Cleaning out of Winsfield, Missouri. Brandy has talked with them and they hire all their own employees. She has spoken with references for this company who have very positive things to say. They have some very long-term, four- and five-year customers that she's spoken with and did not find any negative references for them. So my hope is that we will actually be able to award a contract to this company and get moving forward.
Have we used Cristaline before?
Cristaline is who we're using now.
Now, okay.
Citywide Cleaning out of Winsfield, Missouri is the third lowest bidder.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the bid of Citywide Cleaning for the amount of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cornell, was that Fred seconded? Seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the low bid of Cristaline out of Winsfield, Missouri in the amount of twenty-seven thousand eight thirty?
Citywide.
Citywide. Citywide.
Oh, I'm on the wrong line.
No, right here.
Citywide.
Citywide for twenty-two seven forty. And it's not the, I guess it's technically not the low bid, but it's the best bid of twenty-two thousand seven forty.
Did you correct that motion? I had the wrong company? Okay, and the amount is twenty-seven, or twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty?
Correct.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Do we need to document in the records when we never take a low bid? Is that a requirement that we put something on the record?
Yes. And Brandy puts all of this information into the bid file, so if ever it's questioned, all of the documentation and the emails and conversations back and forth with these companies will be there.
Thank you.
My next item for you is the employee uniform shirt bid. If you'll remember, we had originally bid this and only got one bidder from somewhere out of town. We rebid this and actually received six bids. The lowest bid is from S.P. Designs and Manufacturing out of Cape Coral, Florida. The second low bidder is Eagle Activewear out of Warrenton. We've used Eagle Activewear for a number of years now for our shirts. My concern with the low bidder being out of Florida is there are many times when something will come in wrong and will have to be picked up and redone to get it accurate. We did question this company about who will pay the postage for things going back and forth, and they did indicate that they would be willing to absorb that cost, but I think we also have to consider the timeframe that's involved with shipping things back and forth between here and Florida.
How are they going to meet the bid requirement of the provider will be required to take the measurements of all city employees at the city maintenance shed and city hall for shirts and pants?
There are no pants involved in this.
Okay, the shirts.
Because it's just the shirts. And in the event that they would need to measure, they would be required by bid to, I mean, this is part of the bid specs. So I think we need to think about that as we award this bid and the fact if they would really live up to that, because it would require them to fly someone out here to do that.
Are they apples to apples as far as the quality?
The bid specs are very specific about the brand and weight of the shirts.
Okay.
So I do believe that we are comparing apples to apples. But it's my feeling that even though Eagle is not the low bidder, that for the saving of time and effort sending things back and forth, and we do that more frequently than what you would really think, something comes in that's not right.
Not necessarily the low bidder, but the best bid might be.
I believe in our instance it is, and the difference is four hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Four hundred and forty dollars and it's a local company that we've had good luck with in the past, correct?
Absolutely.
I would make a motion to approve the bid of Eagle Activewear, the best bid of Eagle Activewear in the amount of three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second. Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark to accept the best bid from Eagle Activewear of Warrenton, Missouri in the amount of three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
The only other item I have for you is you will find under your operational updates tab, the project scheduling worksheet for the new budget year. This, as you well know, changes on a regular basis as we add things that come up, especially for repairs and that, but this is our first effort to, based upon our budget, start to put together some timeframes for when we'll be working on projects in the Public Works and Grounds and Maintenance Departments. So you will continue to get this, which will reflect completed projects and any changes that we have in scheduling at the second meeting of each month.
Just out of curiosity, where's the manhole, where's Big Creek Crossing?
That is...
North of town.
That way along the creek, I can't think of any of that subdivision, I'm sorry. It's in the creek and it needs to be addressed, it's got some water.
I just wasn't familiar with that. I mean, that's funny, I was just curious.
Sorry.
That's all right. You would have no way of knowing to ask that question.
And that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay. I don't see any sidewalks on Main Street or are those not on our to-do list this year? On Main Street? I was thinking like up by the funeral home, back this way on the south side of Main Street.
On Walton.
No, on Main.
On Main.
Yeah, yeah, on the south side. Obviously, I haven't said anything to you about that then, no. I'll get with you on that. That's it?
Can I ask you a question? On projects, you know, we've got that whole area of town's torn up with street work, the older section by the school, the second, third street, that area. Is that, I'm here to be, are we going to simply patch the street and then next year pave the whole street? Is that the intent or...
We will look at paving the whole street if it ranks on what we need to do, but we're patching them right now.
Okay.
And then we'll reevaluate after we get them patched and how they hold up and then readjust if they need to be overlaid and we'll put it in a grading system and see where it comes out.
Okay.
Are we redoing the ditch work there that we tore up? Are we re-sodding that or...
That's where we're at right now.
Okay.
We're cleaning it up and they've been paving. Anything else, Terry?
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Now, I'm back to Mr. Gavers. Public Works Report.
Evening, Mayor Gordon. Actually, you had a month's report. That's a lot of the patch work we've been doing and ditch work. The second street water line upgrade's been completed, like I said, we're doing repairs of that. And we finished up Andorra Estates with the grinding and overlay and fairly encircled with the chip seal. Any questions?
I'm just out of curiosity, I've been looking at the water treatment plant and you've got some numbers on Truesdale Packing. Are those numbers typical or are they...
That's correct.
So they're starting to get back to where they were?
So this would be the wastewater treatment plant, that's what they're discharging to us.
Okay.
And those samples are taken and sent off to an independent lab.
And these are what we expect them to be?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question.
Guy, one of my questions on well production is, why is well number four, why is the gallon production so much less than the other wells?
Wow, that's interesting.
Or it appears to me to be considerably less.
Well, seven's five, that's what it disproduces?
Well four.
Well four, right.
I mean, is there a reason why that doesn't pump as much as the other wells or is it older or...
A smaller pump.
It's what?
A smaller pump.
Smaller pump, okay.
Which one is that guy?
Where's number four located?
That's the one over by Troy Street.
And what street?
Troy on Oakland?
Yeah.
By the city service.
Ashland, thank you.
Ashland, I'm sorry.
Ashland.
So if you're connected to one of these pumps that doesn't pump the volume, do you see that in your pressure?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Because they're all tied together, right? They're all looked at.
One well might be pushing to another well.
Okay.
You know, topping it off.
Yeah.
And that can be adjusted as we need it with the level of the water of the towers.
You're thinking, so... You're right.
Any more questions for Guy? What about your yard waste site?
I looked into the yard waste site and that averaged between seven thousand to thirteen thousand dollars to have a camera installed and that's able to, that would be able to read a license plate number. I think that would be important versus having this side view of where the vehicle is. And then with the other add-ons would be another four hundred and eighty-six dollars. With the upgrade of the wastewater plant, my goal would be to have that included in with the wastewater plant, a camera system, surveillance system, that would be able to be added on with other things in the city. One of the options that we could come up with would be having a seasonal staff working a Saturday for four hours and letting people in. And then like a four-month period from working a four-hour shift, it would be approximately five hundred and fifty dollars from the six days you did from July to October. And if we wanted it for Saturday and Sunday, it'd be at one thousand one hundred, that's an estimated, so we can get something down there, set down, and then we can monitor what kind of usage we have out of that and determine if we really need something down there to keep it the way it is.
I guess I've lost the conversation a little ahead.
This was the issue that I brought up a few months ago, where the citizens that work out of town, they aren't here during the week to get a key to go use the yard waste dump. We wanted to find an option so that the citizens had a way to dump their yard waste on the weekends, but we don't want to just let them go because we've had history of dumping materials that are not mulchable or, you know, we don't want up there. So I've talked to them about this as well and this seems to be a good option right now because we still have the staff, we don't have to rehire anybody because as the seasonal staff is shifting from some of the things that we need them to do, we need to put somebody out there for four hours until the end of October to at least see how it goes and give the option for the citizens to take their yard waste there. That person can keep tabs on who it is, sign them in, what they're dumping off, have a form to kind of track what's coming and going and make sure they're a city citizen. I think that's another very important thing that we wanted to verify, that this is not some company coming in from out of town to do that. So I don't, do we need to just realign staff or, Terry, how do we proceed to get this done?
I think you all would need to vote to honor whatever hours you want on the weekend and utilize seasonal staff.
Why don't we get a Saturday morning, you know, eight to noon or ten to two or something along that way?
I think ten to two would cover a good chunk of time that allows people to work in their yards, get in their vehicles, take it out there at ten and either two.
Where are you, know where the sewer?
It's out at the sewer, the city sewer and water plant north of town.
You're just going to do that in the summer months?
Yeah, I think for now, let's see if we do it July through October. You know, that would allow the fall yard waste as well and I think that's something that we can look at and if it went well, if it was well received, maybe something we can consider to implement, starting again, maybe March of next year. Does that sound fair to folks? So I'd like to make a motion that, starting as soon as we can realign shift, I guess from July through October, that we assign a seasonal part-time staff to the sewer plate treatment plant.
Wastewater treatment plant.
Wastewater treatment plant for receipt of yard waste from the citizens of Warrenton and monitor that and see how it goes.
Hours of...
Hours of ten to two would be my choice.
That's it.
Just second on that, Alderman Ock. Motion made by Alderman Kesslerly, seconded by Alderman Ock to approve the yard waste site disposal system on the dates of July through October, using seasonal employees from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item fifteen C, approval of overlay of North Market to In East Alley project.
These are some overlay projects that were scheduled that we need to get the, go ahead to do and that come out to be five thousand five hundred dollars with budgeted.
So it came in within forty bucks? It came in with forty bucks of the budget?
Five thousand four hundred and sixty.
Wow.
Some good research, I think.
Yeah, there you go. I'm making a motion to accept, I guess we approve these, is that what we have to do?
Yes.
Can we approve them all at one time?
I don't know about that.
I don't think so.
I would make a motion that we approve the overlay for North Market to Northeast Alley.
Second.
What was the amount, five thousand four hundred and sixty?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Kesslerly to approve the overlay of North Market to Northeast Alley Project in the amount of five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Next project.
Make a motion to approve the work or the bid for North Market to Northwest Alley for the amount of five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the, what are we on here?
Overlay of North Market to Northwest Alley.
Overlay on North Market to Northwest Alley in the amount of five thousand four hundred Overlay of North Market to Northwest Alley in the amount of $5,460. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Make a motion to approve the overlay project from Ashland Forty-Seven to Troy in the amount of $8,940.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the overlay of the Ashland to Forty-Seven to Troy project in the amount of $8,940. Roll call.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Someone could do the next one because I finally see somebody's hand writing equals mine, so. Somebody else can read it because I have it.
Guy, do you want to explain this one for the public?
The hay, the bail hay?
Yeah.
They cut hay at the wastewater treatment plant. And we put it in paper and they, for a bid for how much a round bail. And Howard Linky's been bailing it for the last two years and they said he's been bailing it for as long as everybody can remember. But we thought we needed to put it in there in case somebody else wanted to bid on it. He was the only one that bitted on it. He bitted a dollar a bail. And that's on the terms that he may not be able to bail where we haul our sludge at. If I need to haul the sludge, that comes first.
Make a motion to approve the bid of Howard Linky for bailing at the wastewater treatment facility at a dollar a bail.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the low bid for the hay bailing at the wastewater treatment facility to Howard Linky in the amount of one dollar per bail. Roll call.
Alder Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
I got one question. What do they do with that hay?
Pardon me?
Does he sell that hay himself or the city?
The hay?
Yeah.
I think he feeds it to his cattle.
What does a bale of hay go for?
About 200 bucks a ton.
How much?
One bale would be 275 bucks for one bale.
Really? He's got a deal there.
Yeah.
Except it's just all grass hay, isn't it?
It don't matter.
One thing, there's a lot of hay this year though.
You've been bailing your front yard all season.
That's right. They're already selling it.
Are you proposing that we should go into the hay, baling hay, selling hay?
No, no, I'm not proposing.
No, I don't have a chance to propose it.
What else you got, Guy?
That's all I have. You can go home, huh? I appreciate it.
What would I got?
We thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you.
I'm going with Jack now, zoning officer and building commissioner. Jack Camp, what do you got for us?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First, you have a Building Department monthly report for the month of June. If you have any questions, I tried to streamline it a little, tried to put it in new format to give you a little more information and try to make it as clear as possible for yous. If yous have any comments.
The three, three stop work orders corrected were those, the side-by-side. Where are we at on the stop work orders on the three residences?
They were corrected on the twentieth, June twentieth.
Okay.
Everything was brought up to speed and they're going. The only stop work order in place is for the Warrenton Apartments where they were working without a permit and they have turned in plans that are being reviewed and hopefully that'll be taken care of in the next day or two.
Okay.
Or next week, I better explain that. Hopefully, next week, get it reviewed and go on again.
Jack, I thank you for this format here on the, this is easy to follow and easy to read.
Well, that was my goal. Try to make it, give you as much information but where you can see it at a glance.
The next item I have for you is approval to purchase iPads for the P&amp;Z Commission.
Yes. That is approval for purchasing the iPads for the P&amp;Z Commission. My original budget was $4,400. The current price would be $4,470.87. The extra $70.87 is because the price of the cases went up. The iPads are still the same price, but the cases went up a little.
And that's your best buy?
Yes. And the $70 will come out of the Planning Commission miscellaneous account.
Okay.
Do they get nicer machines than we have?
It's the exact same machine, sir.
What about the pad, the case?
The exact same.
Are they gonna get these fancy little flippers too?
That I'm not sure of.
We're really taking it up here.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the iPads and covers for $4,470.87.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the iPad purchase for Best Buy in the amount of $4,470.87.
Jack, I know as an average citizen hearing this, that we're buying iPads for this department and we're buying, you know, in my mind, this is absolutely insane as an average citizen. So, for the record, I would like to discuss exactly the cost of what we're doing here. You know, as far as what are we saving for paper? We went through the process and we do spend how much for the zoning?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but a considerable amount of cost for the paper.
Terry, do you have an idea with that?
And the time for preparing it because it's 11 copies for everybody and exact the same benefit that now each one of you have the iPad.
Well, I see the amount of paper that we get, but I don't see the amount of paper that the zoning folks get.
I have those numbers, but I don't have them with me.
They look quite similar to what we have.
Does it, do they get the same paper?
They get a ton.
At least.
Okay.
Well, I think the other thing that people need to realize is, you know, you've had 20 years with envelopes and paper and it's so much easier to communicate and get stuff back and forth with this than it was before. I mean, how many times do we communicate and pass things through the way between you and I? And you can just do it and get your information and keep working on it. Whereas before, how do you get an extra piece of paper? How do you get the amended thing to you? Police are delivering or you don't get it, telemeeting. So, this is really a great.
I just, I just want to go on the transparency thing. So, the people that are watching this on TV realize the amount of money that we spend to make copies, to deliver and do the paper is actually more expensive than the outlay of these items. So, and when someone leaves that board, they return their iPad.
Absolutely.
And the board does get a copy of everything that the P&amp;Z Commission receives. But now you guys are getting it electronically and I'm still making paper copies for the P&amp;Z Commission.
Whenever I hear Alderman Flake say, "He really likes this," then I become a believer.
Alderman Clark, the last meeting, had all sorts of problems and he's got, whoop, this meeting, right? Yes. Good answer. And I do know the score. And he does know the score.
Any other questions for Jack?
It's a learning experiment.
It is a learning experiment. Thank you, Jack. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on this?
Oh, we got, I gotta vote on the floor. Roll call on that, Melly.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Now, Jack can go home too.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I'm ready for bringing out a show chief of police report.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have the police department report for June 2013. The numbers really don't surprise me there as far as numbers are called. Being the two men down, it's pretty consistent with that and we should see that level out pretty much across the board as we go forward. Only two ride-alongs last month, but at least we're consistently getting people to come out and see what we're doing. I think I alluded to this last month, but actually the whole department and the detectives worked really hard with the Secret Service to put a case on three individuals that passed through town that passed some of the most amazing-looking counterfeit bills at Walmart. We got kind of lucky and caught the bad guys as they were trying to scoot out of town, but the Secret Service was really happy with the way that our department handled that and thousands of dollars in recovered stolen property essentially. It was really a good case. The other thing that I'm happy to report is we have not had any additional problems at the parks since we instituted our program. The detectives have been pretty instrumental in that situation. They've been doing a lot of surveillance and putting the road guys onto the individuals that I think were pretty much responsible for doing those things in the park and we're giving the parks a bad name. So, hopefully, we've got that under control.
Chief, are we making any progress with, I'd like to say waist-high grass, but it's probably chest-high now on tomahawk?
I believe we sent that in for abatement. We did the nuisance hearing on that and gave him substantial time to get that taken care of. And I believe he got the backyard taken care of, but didn't do the front yard.
I don't know that I could see the backyard through the height of the front yard. I know the derelict vehicles, I believe, are moved.
Okay. I'm not too sure what the problem is with getting that done, but we had it in for abatement. So, one way or the other, it's gonna get that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, how did the cop on top go?
Actually, thank you. It went pretty well. I think we netted about $900 for shirt sales and donations and Officer Blattle had a really good time doing that and he actually put that together in a couple of weeks. He came in and he said, "I'd really like to do this." And he reached out and did everything he needed to do to get that going. So, thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I was buying, you know, the kids sure enjoy that. I mean, when the car's out there and the lights are going and he's up in the roof yelling at people and thanking him. I think it kind of made it a neat event.
What else you got, chief?
All I have.
Any questions for the chief?
I had mentioned to Terry, and something I'd like us to consider doing as a city, is to put together a hotline that goes to the dispatch, but a, we talked about the neighborhood watch, which I think we still need to work more on implementing and educating our community about that, but also have a number that's not 911 because those of us in the community think of that as, you know, I got a heart attack, a car accident or something like that. But another number that does go there that is a number that I could call for something suspicious, that looks like something questionable going on down the street. Could you please come check it out? Could you please send a non-emergency lights-on cop or somebody to come and check these scenarios out so that we get our neighborhoods watching out for each other? And this is just something that I just feel like, you know, the average citizen is not going to release their name or they're not gonna want to go, "My name is Karen Kesslerly and I want to report this."
Well, yeah, and I think we're talking about maybe two different things here. There is a non-emergency number to dispatch, which is the 7088 number. I think what you're talking about maybe is like a tip hotline that would more traditionally come into the police department.
Yeah, but if I have something going on down the street and that goes to a recorder, that doesn't do me any good.
Well, and see, if that's the case, if there's something that's going on right now, they need to dial 7088.
Okay, so that's a number.
And they can do that anonymously.
Okay, well, then that's a number that I think from a marketing standpoint, we need to wrap our hands around how to educate the community on that line because I didn't know that line.
That's not on the city website, is it?
No, that's a non-emergency dispatch.
Yeah, but you know it because of what you do and you know it obviously, but I don't know that number.
I don't know.
Yeah, so I think from a marketing standpoint, there's also something that, to get the newspaper involved in, you know, it's a good story for them to get the citizens involved with the city to protect our own, you know?
Well, I dialed by accident a 411 and they told.
Did you find your number?
And they, I, the police came out, they, because they were, they thought it was like a 911, non-emergency, but because I didn't do anything, it hung up right away. They came out to investigate. Is the 411 a non-emergency?
That's to find a phone number. That's to get a phone number.
Information.
Well, it's happened twice and the Warrenton officer came out twice. Get your phone, darling. See that? That's the worst sometimes, isn't it? I switched the keys when I had my glasses on. Actually, my pocket dialed it. Maybe it was a 211. It was not a 911 number.
Yeah.
It was not another number.
But do you think it's something we could do as far as getting an education thing going on? And I would really like to get the neighborhood watch program up and running. I think it's time, some of the stuff that's been going on in our community.
Anything else for the chief? We're gonna move on. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
We're going, we're ready to convert our bills to ordinance. And the first bill is 18A number 35-13.
And this is a bill to put a noise ordinance sign up at, it's a lot of paperwork.
Four different locations.
Okay.